Welcome, everybody. Tonight is a work session. So there will be no public participation. Tonight's meeting. The meeting, however, will be recorded. And tomorrow will be archived on the website. Is there anyone from the news media here, either in person or online tonight? We shall move on. Before we go too much further. We'd like to. Give a belated happy birthday greetings to. Director Johnson, happy birthday. When was it?
September ten, I turned eighty-two.
Well, we really missed it. Sorry. Well, happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
So we're going to move in. To our work sessions. And the first topic. Well, let's, let's see if the superintendent has any communication.
That's the only thing is just excuse Director Leon who's out. And wishing him well and, and it's all good for you. Thank you.
All right. I didn't want you to think I forgot. Okay, so. We're going to go discussion and I have the honor of asking our folks from Phoenix. To come forward and I've also asked. Thomas and Kat will do the same if they, before they get into the meat and potatoes of things to. Introduce themselves. We have two of the three new board members with us tonight. And then tell us about what your duties and responsibilities are.
Start off, so. It's green now. Welcome. Hi, my name is Thomas McGregor. I'm actually the executive director of the Phoenix School of Roseburg. I have worked for with Roseburg students at Phoenix for seventeen going on seventeen years. This is my sixth year as the director. I love it. It's a great organization that is. Supported by the community and we. Try our best with some of the. The people that really need us in this community. And so. So is that kind of hit what you were looking for, Ron? Kat, you want to go?
Sure. I'm Kat Birken. This will be my second year with Phoenix. I started out my career. Working as a special education director out of Bayes Creek Charter School. And then I went on to do even more special education. Teaching and then I came to Phoenix. Two summers ago to help with some special education. Work and there was an opening for a principal and I said, well, you know, I'll step in for a little bit and. Here I am still. I did not think that I would be a principal. That wasn't something that was in my future in my mind, but working with the school has really changed my mind on that. I love the team that we're working with. It's a challenge every day and I really am proud to be part of that challenge.
Yeah, we're really happy to have Kat. Remember when I offered the job? She's like, you solve puzzles every day. I want that. And so that's what we continue to do together. You see, we presented some items for your packet this evening. I'm just going to go over briefly. The first one and then turn it over to Kat. Just want to be clear that we are. Your charter school. We serve the Roseburg District students. We serve students grades eight through twelve and. It is our pleasure to also serve your strategic plan. We have been working with our staff to make sure they know that they are part of the strategic plan and honestly. It's a good strategic plan. My staff is thoroughly on board care, instruct, support and graduate with a plan. Let's do this. You can see in our document here, we have our board adopted mission statement for the charter. But as all the schools and Roseburg Public Schools are working on a continuous improvement plan process. And these were some of the work products through that process that Kat provided. She's kind of. Crafted what is a vision for our work at the charter school. And then kind of taken your all strategic plan, our mission and tried to give it more meat to those bones and. You can see in that, that paragraph there, there at the bottom of page one. What we're committed to and what we're, we're trying to achieve with our instructional leaders, our, our staff, our teachers. Kat, do you want to take us on to the dashboard and some of the slides?
Sure, so. By, from my experience coming here, starting last year, we reviewed our goals for the charter. And we began last year with some challenging numbers. I feel that we're making some improvements in those areas. We are increasing attendance. Last year, I, I see a good trend this year as well in increasing attendance. Kids are. Are staying attending more frequently. And the numbers for on track for graduation have increased slightly, but I'd like to see it increase a lot more. Then at the bottom of the, the document here, it shows where our kids are at and these are very concerning numbers. What I do want to show you is that we were able to test ninety-two percent of our students last year. That was a goal for us is to get a really good snapshot of what our students know and how we could make improvements. And the numbers that came out of this are the really things that we're going to focus on for our continuous improvement plan is how are we going to get these kids reading and how are we going to get these kids? Their math levels up. Really interesting trends too. We have a cohort, they're now tenth graders that have extremely low scores and. I feel like those were most likely the kids that were really highly impacted by COVID, so it'll be interesting to see if we can get them up to speed. But it's interesting to see that their, their numbers continue to be. Really alarming. So that's what we have for the data dashboard. Before I move on to the slide, does anybody have any questions on that?
You, I was just curious, what do you think or what are the changes that you made that's helping the attendance to increase?
Okay, that's a good question. So. Coming into the charter school with fresh eyes, I felt like in the beginning of this school year, I could really have a good idea of what was causing students to not want to come. And a lot of that comes down to. Two things, one, that comfortable. Feeling they got from COVID where they could just stay home. And so just that expectation of them coming to school was a challenge for them. And so we really pushed that it's, it's the expectation. It's not just that you get to choose to come to school or not. The other thing was a sense of safety and that's something that we've really worked on last year and we're working on this year is. Students need to feel safe at school. And when they don't feel safe, they don't come. So I think that increasing that safety by having strong boundaries, strong rules. And the strategies that we have in place to make a secure environment is really important for them. So I, I think. That we'll continue to see more students stick around.
Can you remind me what you're ninety-two percent? Congratulations. The people getting tested when that was a big. Topic last year that we talked about, what was it like fifty percent if I remember?
And yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're at sixty percent right now as of September. So we're hoping that we can continue to get everybody tested for this file as well.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point out that that was. I remember last year talking about and saying, how can we? Know what this data is if we aren't even testing the kids. And so that was. The first step in the process of increasing the numbers is make sure that everybody gets tested. So that's. A big step up and the numbers are, like you guys said, trending in the right direction over what I've seen over the past couple of years. So congratulations.
And how many students do you currently have enrolled?
Hundred and sixty-three.
Thank you.
You, Kat and Thomas, I, I'm curious how. So using Star 360 for your benchmarking data, right? And have you, have you seen, I know they put out their own. Kind of metadata on this, but have you seen a high correlation with OSAS data with this? So your kids right now that are moving from on watch to. At or above benchmark, have you seen those, you seen kids pass the ELA math benchmarks? At those grade levels?
I. I see that there's, they're struggling across the board. Testing data is really difficult to. To trust at this time. We have a lot of students that. Don't give it their all sometimes in the testing. And so really. I think we need to do more at prepping them for testing to get the information for, you know, what they really know. So. I do, I do feel like this, this. Since we got so many students will be reflective and what the students actually know in those tests.
So hundred and sixty-three, is that comparable what you usually have this time? Like last year, or did you have more than hundred and sixty-three?
Since COVID, the number has been lower than anticipated. We've already had thirteen ten-day drops. So you know, somebody came in, registered the kid this summer. Didn't show up. And so we are creating some strategies. We have the youth development division grant for student re-engagement. We were successful in getting that grant again. So we had two staff members that that's their. Part of their purpose is to re-engage students. And so that's an active part of what we're doing. I'd like to get the, I budgeted the ADM for the charter at one eighty-five. And so that's really where I'd, I'd hope to be at.
So you ran a big recruiting, I guess recruiting is probably the right. So it didn't really work. Or you don't?
So we've annually, I've budgeted about five thousand dollars marketing and are just basic informative that we have the GED. We have busing to South County. Ran that in radio and then it was pushed through to YouTube, six-second non-skipable and Hulu non-skipable. I, I don't know if there's any kind of data that's correlated towards gaining further enrollment. I, my goal with the advertising is really just to remind parents after county fair, here comes school. And if you're going to do something different, this is the time to make that change.
Thank you.
I feel like we're getting, we have a, a good flow of students coming in. We just had six new students enroll and I feel like sometimes. Getting adjusted to their school, we're a school of choice. And so this is a really good time for us to gain students when they are not settled into the school that they're in. So we, we get a lot of students that way.
You're, you said that you, with a grant, you got two extra staff members for re-engagement. And. What? Do you have an idea of what exactly they're doing to try to do that to?
Yeah, I'll start on that with that. Explain the grant. And so the youth development division, they have a specialized grant fund for. Re-engagement youth. I believe we presented about this in June. Also, this region is one of the highest regions in the state, Coos, Curry and Douglas for disengaged youth. Across the state, if you go to opportunityindex.org, you can see that detailed information. Presented for the nation and for our counties. But to, to point clarity to your question, so we hired two staff members. One is an additional reading assistant. And that was a practice we developed through COVID and. Having more of a special education resource room. Only having a hundred and sixty-five students, resources are tight. So we felt. Hey, let's make sure we have in-class resources to increase that engagement. The other staff member, his title is a safety and wellness lead. So he is working in the front office, but he's also the one roaming the schools, bringing that safety. But he's also kind of a former wrestler, kind of a, a friend to all students, also working on wellness planning with the students. So the two of those students, we hope in the school, those staff or excuse me, in the school community. Bring those hooks and bring those engagement beyond all the other staff members, but then they also have specific job duties around the disengaged. List which your students have ten-day drops to be the first, you know, stay on that list, be making those phone calls as much as our homeroom teachers or our pathways teachers are already doing. Did I answer your question, Anne, or maybe Kat can help fill in the more blank?
So are you, you are also looking like, what are we doing on, on the ground to re-engage those students? So we also have. So we have students doing this call. I have students, we have staff doing calls out to families to figure out where, where they are and how they can return. We have opportunities. So we have the GE program. If they're not. Interested in getting their diploma, we have job opportunities at Phoenix. So if they're looking to get a job, we can help them in that area too. We have our youth for. We have your epic program there where there's unemployment strategies. So we really are just reaching out to different. You know, if they come in with a problem, we're like, hey, we've got a solution for this. So I think that's really been successful being able to say we. You can do the GED. We've got job opportunities here. We have ways to get you employment. So we're getting a lot of. Think our high, our twelfth grade is really heavy right now. Because we have those kids that are coming back and they just need a few credits or they, they have a job and they want to. They need to continue that employment opportunity and, and get their degree. So. Those are some ways of working on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Kat, do you want to jump into the, the first slide there?
So when I first came to Phoenix, what I. I did a lot of observation and one of the things that I felt that we can improve on was our instruction was also our curriculum. Make sure that we're teaching. In a manner that engages students and gets them to participate because that also ties in with. Attendance and being in class as long as they're, they're challenged. So we looked into a curriculum mapping tool called Atlas and what that is, it's a program where they, we have our teachers put in their units and lessons. It shows what standards they're addressing and. We can all see it together. So I can work with my teacher to say, okay, what are you teaching this week? What, what are the standards you're addressing and we can go from there. The way that we can also use this is if we notice, for example, with our Star 360, we have. Some kids that are really weak in certain areas, we can make sure that in our English classes, we're putting a heavy emphasis on those areas. And so that's how we're using that. It's still in the beginning stages. We just rolled it out this year. So that gives us the ability to coach our teachers to give transparency. So I can make sure that they're, they're having that. Warm-up activity that they're having engaging instruction. So I'm really excited about that. And then. I've noticed with using that, there are some, there are some teachers that. Just have things down really well and they're engaged and used to teaching that way. And then other teachers that need a lot of coaching. And so the five D training that we've been doing has been really helpful for that. To give them the whole picture of what it means to be a teacher and what it means to be on stage in your classroom. So one of the things that we've talked about before is like. You know, popping in and making sure teachers are up on their feet, that they're giving instruction. We've also made it so the first fifteen minutes of classes protected time, kids can't leave. To go to the bathroom, they can't do anything in class, but that's when that direct instruction starts happening. So we've really tried to adjust some things so that the emphasis is on what's going on in the classroom. And at those times and those minutes that the teacher has with those kids is really important. And that's what that first slide is about. Just having access to that. That tool and then reviewing what the educators are doing. So being in the classroom more often and, and coaching when I'm seeing something that's off, I do a little five-minute. Observations and then I, I write down what I see and things that I'd like to see improve. And that's been really helpful as well. The next slide talks about. The safety issue. This picture is one that we have in our entryway. The kids did this bulletin board over the summer. And it really talks about having a base. Of being trauma-informed. And that's one of the things that we pride ourselves in is that we have a lot of school skill sets that our staff has of being trauma-informed. Teaching our kids restorative justice. Teaching them the language to express their emotions. We have a lot of kids that have pretty high affective. They have a lot of trauma. But I don't think it's just our kids. I think it's kids in general nowadays are, have been exposed to a lot. So with that strong base, then we build community and we're really struggling. We are really. Focusing on community this year, building that. You know, that post-COVID, we can be together, we can be strong. And part of that is. Getting students to use their voice and being advocates. So once, once they feel safe in their community. And then we can look at finding purpose for them and finding them a voice. And that's. Really what this is about, just giving them that strong base and then building them up. And we already have expanded some of our clubs. And we're really excited about some of the programs. We have a health and wellness program where the kids are learning. What our community partners offer in the health and wellness field and they're working with those partners. Just as like aides, they help set up events, they get to know what community partners are out there and they help with some of the little things when, when those. Partners are putting on events. For example, they're doing the five, there's a five K. Run next month.
No, it's a Saturday.
It's Saturday. Yeah. And so our kids are helping out with that. So that's. That's taking those tenth graders that are. Often disengaged and they are finding a purpose and they're getting engaged and we're seeing some improvement and students engaging in a coursework too. So that's that part of it. And then the operational part of it.
Yeah, I'll take the, the third slide. You know, it was just really brief here. I feel I've been really focusing the team on embracing growth and change in what we do. And that has its cost of, everybody's now helping me grow and change in where we're taking the organization. We've have had quite a bit of. New hats, new people in the building rather, since COVID and it's actually been very positive for Phoenix. I think it's giving us a new. Way of looking at things and, and we're really, we're evolving rapidly right now. With that operational efficiency, we're also making sure we have systems to bring in community partners, but more importantly, the students. And the parents and their households. And so Kat has been doing a lot of stakeholder engagement and then creating events to do that in a way that's very comfortable for others, but also targeted at times. And lastly, we are. About to roll out a database that will. Will, it's mainly focused on the dashboard. Of data for the board here and our operational or academic objectives, but it also is creating that alignment with our employment program. And, and the charter school and making sure that there, there's data that's collected, that's accessible for the charter folk and the employment program folk. And so with that, we're hoping the, the, the team continues to thrive and grow further instructional strategies because they're well informed. Kat, you want to take the last slide?
Sure. So we had a lot of new teachers last year and I was new as well. Where we saw that some places that we needed to grow was the onboard, onboarding training. So that's a focus this year as well as making sure that our new teachers have the training that they need. We, we sent. A couple of our teachers to the five D training. One of them was a brand new teacher that. We can instill that leadership in her. Unfortunately, she took that around with her. She's leaving us, but we have a new staff coming on. But you know, it's. It's finding our instructional leaders in our, our school and building them up. And so that's really what that's about is, is trying to get them as much training as possible. I think we're very solid in the trauma-informed type of training and the emotional support training. I think we need to, to grow definitely in the providing engaging instruction training. So that's part of the five D and just really embracing that. So we are following a series of instructional. Staff PDs that align kind of what, with what the district is doing. We have PLC groups. And then we have advisory PLC groups. And then we have our self-promotional learning group. So we have a lot of training. That we have already set up to make sure that we're addressing all the top, the topics that we want to go through this year. And then we are looking to get Sanctuary Institute certification this year and that's exciting and for us, I guess Phoenix has been working on this for quite a few years. And last year, working with that team that comes and does the certification, I said, this is going to be the year that we do it. Do you want to talk a little bit about how that works, the Sanctuary Institute?
Oh yeah. So it's the Andrews Children's Institute of New York. It's a national model that's evidence-based in theory change to achieve a. Trauma-informed culture in an organization. Basically, we have already adopted as a board, seven. Values and principles that, that guide the agency, ranging from non-violence, democracy, growth and change, emotional intelligence. I think I got most of them there, but you get a, you get a feel for it. And then there's some, some, some tools that are almost feel like restorative justice, like red flag meetings, anybody can call one. In a way, we look at. The brain science and then operationalize that in our language. It's called the self-model. You can, you can Google more and learn more about that. I won't take our time on that, but. We're very excited because we've had these experts from New York now come to our, our campus three times. And they're very critical and it's been, it's been good. It's really shifted the way we do business and I think for the better. And I'm really excited about Kat's leadership and how she's a systems thinker. And where she's gotten our team to really embrace doing the model with fidelity. I'll stop there. Yeah, right.
How many new teaching staff members you have?
This year?
This year, or give me a percentage.
We did actually. Pretty good. We, we've rolled through most of our folks, but we did have one person who's leaving for another district school and we just made a hire on Friday. So I think.
So basically one?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. People want to follow Kat.
Yeah, we've got most pretty many. It's a good team. I'm pretty excited about it.
I forgot earlier, back to the numbers, just for a second. For you, Kat, I just want to, how do you feel? That you're doing against your. Your expectations. I know that we have the benchmark up here and you came in last year and it was way down there and. You're obviously trending in the right direction, but are you at where you were hoping to be or where you thought you would be in this process?
I, I feel that at the beginning of the year, last year, it was really difficult to get momentum because it really was an observation time. I think towards the end of the year, we were making progress and we were setting up systems. I'm super excited about how we are at the beginning of the year. I've had staff say, this is, this feels different. The kids are more engaged in the classroom. We've set things up a little bit differently to help. Kind of triage some of those kids that are having a difficult time in the classroom. So I'm feeling like. I, I'm feeling confident. We're going to see better numbers by the end of the year. Yeah. I'm excited about it.
So a lot of my questions that I had, you've already answered. Being a new school board member and getting to know you. So I went back and watched the last ten presentations. With this. From Phoenix to the board. And you know, it was, it was pretty concerning. And, but. I will say that. I started to have hope when you brought on Kat and hearing her heart and seeing what was going on and. But I have, I have some questions because I went through and I read the contract. And to familiarize myself with what's going on, I know that there are five school in Appendix D, I think it is, that lists the ones that we are part of being compared. Compared with. And it, it appears that one of them is no longer a charter school. I don't know if that has. Much. Bearing on all of this, but that was one thing I did notice. But. One of the things also listed is. About ODE giving us reports because a lot of. What we need is that. So my question is. When do we? Get that information? Is there a specific timeline when ODE has to have that information to you, to us? You know, that, that is one. Another question that I had. And. I think really that was what's left.
So. Yeah, I can answer those two. I'll start with the ODE. As a Roseburg Public School, our student database is actually your database. And so our staff works with the information technology team here at Roseburg. And so like right now, my registrar is crunching because we're at the end of the first ADM quarter. For September and we're working to make sure all the data in the student database is with fidelity. Is that the level of data you're referring to?
I just know it says that. In the contract, it talks about. That ODE as far as attendance and graduation.
Annual data.
The annual data.
So the annual data, that's the student report card data.
Yes, report card.
Yeah, so that is. Probably next month, I think we get the preliminary and then by, we get what's called the media file by January. And so those are.
The school report cards for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be out the middle of October. For all of our, the accountability details in the school report cards.
Okay.
Yeah. And the, and the student database drives that data is my understanding.
Great.
And if you want to talk more about that at some time, and I can share what I've learned from ODE and how that data is created. And then for the comparable schools. So the comparable schools mechanism was something that my understanding is that UCC has done at times in different iterations and the board advocated for it back in twenty fifteen. It entered the contractual process. It remained in the contractual process in twenty twenty. And it's just something to showcase. Where Phoenix is at and a, and a median with comparable schools, the schools were chosen by. Similar type of student population, similar type of community, they're nested in similar kind of relationship with the greater community. It's not perfect. I, I do know that those schools change names, change purposes. And so. If we'd like to revisit that and that aspect of the contract, of course, we could do so. I feel. By and large, though, the contract. Ask Phoenix to continually improve, ask Phoenix to continually growing the data. And the comparable schools is just something else to inform that comparison. It's, it's that, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you both very, very much for coming and we'll see you the next. Check in. Whatever that is. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into something that we've been waiting for. With, I mean, we're, we're really happy that Cheryl and, and you're going to get to present because I know it's going to be awesome. We've seen the prelim. Slides, so.
No pressure.
No pressure. No, you're, you guys are great. So this is finance one oh one. And Cheryl, I'll let you take it.
Hey, the handouts at your spots. Hey, the handouts at your spots. Maybe I'll tell you what, we have the clinical on the screens there. So the board members have a variety of questions, I tried to answer, you guys came out of, some of you guys had a different viewpoints and I tried to address most of your questions. Um, one of the questions we were asked is where are our funds held? Uh, the district keeps funds primarily in the local government investment pool, also known as the LGIP. Uh, state school funds, state, federal grant funds and local property taxes are directly deposited at the LGIP. So it's not like we're center-chested and take it from the bank and just post right there. When funds are needed to pay our bills and invoices, the money's transferred to Uncoop Bank. And that's where we have all of the district's checking accounts is to Uncoop Bank, and that includes our ASP, also known as our associated skin body. Uh, those are the funds that that the kids fundraise for and collect on behalf of their schools. Uh, we also have um funds at Pompuir Share and Wells Fargo. And they're the financial institutions that process our first bonded debt. Uh, those are funded by what they call an intercept agreement, so we get money into our account from ODE for our school support funds. And before the money is sent to us and agreed upon amount is taken from those basic school support funds and sent to institutions that then hold it until the bonds are payable in June, December and June. So that's where the money hangs out of.
Yeah, yeah, put the current FDIP guaranteed money. Or they film for seven hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty thousand.
I think it's still two hundred fifty thousand, I did, I did look to see what is for the LGIP and I have a list of uninsured investment institutions and I have submitted a question to them on that to get some more detail.
Okay, thank you.
That would be one of the questions I was asked that I did not have in my presentation, so we're working on that. Um, purchases, how are purchases approved? Um, purchases are supposed to start with a requisition, all purchases for goods and services outside of payable. Uh, the person initiating the purchase orders enters a requisition into our accounting system. Depending on the source of the funding uh and the building department and the size, it will go through a variety of approvals. The building principal is then to approve it. Uh, and then it goes on its way to us over here at the district office, if it's from a grant fund, it might be a Melissa approval, it may be a Michelle or a Jill approval next. If it's over a certain dollar amount, Denny in the warehouse lays eyes on it to make sure that we've got appropriate bidding done uh if necessary, and then it ends up at my desk and I turn them into purchase orders. That process could take as little as a day or it could take a week or more depending on all the people along the way. But that guarantees that everybody looks at our expenses just to make sure that they're appropriate for a grant. Uh, and there was a building principal wants to spend our money on. Um, two hundred and fifty, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars is really the limit for Denny to take a look at that. Um, and purchases over fifty thousand usually come to the school board for approval, you guys have known, we brought some of those purchases to you. Uh, per our purchasing policy, some purchases are exempt from that specific fifty thousand dollar approval. Uh, curriculum purchases, uh, ongoing software purchases, uh, utilities, utilities are processed directly in the business office, we get the bills from Pacific Power and we pay them and move on. We do keep an eye as to the level of utility, if we notice a utility is we're spending a lot more money and water at, say, Joe Lane, we usually then reach out Tracy Broth and find out the reason why. So um, the spending authority for those, spending authority in general comes from when the school board appropriates our budget document. In June, every year after the budget hearing, uh, the school board approves a resolution that levies the taxes, approves the budget and appropriates the funds. And the funds are appropriated by category, instruction, support services, debt service, and that is the district's limit in spending authority, we cannot exceed those limits without permission from the school board. That's usually done either through a resolution or a supplemental budget process. So as we watch our spending throughout the year, we make sure that, you know, we may be spending a little more in support services in the budget. We'll be a little less in instruction. We can't exceed those limits, so then we come to you for an incorporation transfer, some other kind of resolution. But that approval of that budget document is what gives us the authority to pay the electric bill every single month. Um, so uh, well, you guys have that. It is, that's the authority of our spending. I said about twelve minus that, so we're in the line. Um, all revenue. Uh, so revenue, this is our budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Our general fund budget for this fiscal year is over seventy-three million dollars or fifty-seven percent of the total budget for the entire school district. Uh, grants and projects funds, more than thirty-one, almost thirty-two million. Our debt service fund, twelve million, ten percent of the total budget. Major maintenance fund is uh almost ten million dollars, and I'll give you a little bit more detail as to why those numbers are in a bit. So our total district budget this year that has been appropriated is a hundred and twenty-seven million, four hundred and ten thousand, three sixty-six. So back to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, where does our revenue come from? In the general fund, now the general fund is just what it sounds like, that's where also most of the action is at, but our grants people would probably tell me now, um, that's where the majority of us are paid from, the majority of our teachers. Uh, classified staff, a lot of them come from the general fund. Uh, most of our funding comes from the state school support fund, that's directly money from the state. As part of that, but we collect it directly from the local taxing authority is local property tax collections. And we get about twenty-seven percent of our general fund budget from local property banks. We have a little bit beginning fund balance. And we have a little bit, uh, one percent each from federal forest fees, the common school fund, uh, just miscellaneous revenue, interest revenue, that type of that type of sources. So our total general fund budget again is about seventy-three million. Where does our grants and projects revenue come from? Uh, four percent of it comes from local sources, including our student body fees. So when students go out and they fundraise, they put the money in, goes into, um, it's actually part of the district's budget. And that goes into um numbers within the grants and projects fund. Uh, driver's ed fees and local grants go into the local sources. One percent is directly from Douglas CSD, and that sounds really low, but remember the majority of the stuff we get from Douglas CSD is in the form of a service, so they provide us a service, they provide us speech therapists. This is the only direct cash that we get from Douglas CSD, they call it. Uh, and we do use that money on things that are included in their local service. Thirty percent of our grants and projects fund um comes from state sources, that would be the high school success, student investment account and um driver ed reimbursement, we get a state reimbursement as well as we collect for direct percent. Forty-eight percent comes from federal sources, including USR title grants, IDEA and child nutrition funds. And seventeen percent comes from grant beginning fund balances. So the total grants and projects fund is about thirty-one million.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Thank you. With regard to property taxes, property tax payer has the option of paying it full, paying it three installments. And then there are those that don't pay at all. How do we get our money in lump sum once or three times a year? And additionally, when the people like people pay up?
We receive almost monthly, well, monthly distributions. Uh, the majority of it comes to us within a month of the three county receiving it. So our largest collections or deposits, twelve million out of about twenty will come in the month of November.
November, okay.
And um, every year when taxes are levied, an amount when we levy for a debt service, we add an amount to allow for the uncollectible.
Okay.
But for general fund, we just don't get it. If later the county sells the property or the people do pay up later, we get prior year collections as part of our monthly distributions.
Thank you.
Your, our state grant uh for seismic funds are also state sourced, but they are included here, they're included in the major maintenance fund. Anybody else have any other questions? Break it up a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry, just with
ESD. Um, so uh why do we, why do we? What are we getting or from them, that one percent?
Well, that's a much larger question than my finance one oh one is going to answer. But I can tell you briefly, um, they provide a variety of services. Uh, a huge majority is is in speech therapy, some special ed services, Melissa probably can expand on that a bit. As part of the local funding mechanism, if you will, some years ago uh, the superintendent sat together and said, we need to receive some of these funds directly because we how we use them in our district might be a little bit different than other districts. So there's a mechanism for what they call flow-through. And it's about four hundred thousand for us. We put those flow-through in their actual dollars, they send us checks three times a year. And we put them into our grants and projects fund and we use them to fund um communications. Uh, we do a lot of staff development with those funds. We can select what we're going to spend that money on rather than the service just being given to us. Uh, but it does have to be within their local service. What other services does does the ESD provide, it's tech, a lot in technology and internet connectivity. Did that answer your?
So that that would be the one percent.
The one percent is just that four hundred thousand dollars for flow-through.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so where does our debt service revenue come from? Currently, the only debt we have in our debt service fund is for our for our pension obligation bonds. When we had a general obligation bond, those funds flowed through here. And in the past, we've had some other QZAP bonds and some other debt. That's all been um expired now, paid off, and so we're down to our pension obligation bonds. Um, a hundred percent of that comes from payroll charges across the district. So if we hire someone within the Title I fund, we charge about fifteen percent of that person's salary. Um, fifteen percent of my salary from the general fund. Uh, it all goes then transferred in, it's not exactly a transfer, but it is receipted as a revenue into the debt service fund. So and that's the money that we use to pay our pension obligation bonds. That's where that money comes from. Where does our major maintenance fund revenue come from? Uh, two percent is local revenue. Uh, sixty-one percent for state sources, and in this particular case for major maintenance, it is all seismic grant. And that's why that fund is quite so big, because we have three funds, three grants going on right, right now. And thirty percent of it is a transfer in from the general fund and fund balances. We transfer money into a few different funds. A transfer is money that we receive into the general fund. And we transfer it out to another fund. Mostly um for the purposes of accumulating a fat fund balance to fund something like a large number of computers, if we want to replace all of our teacher computers next year, we know we can't fund that all in one year. So we transfer two, three hundred thousand dollars to the technology replacement fund and that money accumulates. It's very hard to accumulate an ending fund balance for a specific purpose within the general fund. That is the, that is the purpose of sending it out there. So the majority of our major maintenance projects are funded through the four oh four, the major maintenance fund, we also have a curriculum replacement fund. And now this year, we started a field fund to help us save up for uh replacement of the turf when it's time to do that. Our total major maintenance fund is just under ten, yes.
Now, those funds that we set aside, are they, going back to your first slide, are they in accounts that I'm called bank or they go back into the investment pool and we earning interest on that as a separate line item?
Yep, um, I would consider them to be in the local government investment pool. And at the end of the month, we sit down and we say, okay, how much money in here is um pension obligation bond money? It's just sitting there earning interest, major maintenance, general fund. Uh, grants are generally not to earn interest, they're actually more of a reimbursement grant, the federal and state ones are. So we spend the money, we get that back, we do an allocation and we allocate the interest to all the funds that have earned it.
I'm going to go back to I'm called bank, I don't know, pick on anybody, but what is the process of picking a bank and do you do it similar to? I mean, how, how do you decide one bank over another bank? And how often do you change or you don't really want to, I mean, can you?
As long as a bank is providing the needs for the needs of the district, we generally don't want to make a change. We have so many electronic processes set up at this point, plus you buy check stock, although we more and more do electronic direct deposits. Um, we have not changed banks in my time here. Uh, we occasionally will sit down and look at things like fees and say, hey, can you, you know, we run a lot of business through your bank. And they'll, they'll generally make a deal, we have desktop deposits set up, all of our checks are, you know, deposited right here from the business office, although you know, more and more, it's all electronic which is a good internal control process.
So my question actually would be directed to Rod, do you know when we started with Uncoop?
I think we still have a bunch of money.
Yeah, I think when I first got here fifteen years ago, it was a different name, but then they were bought out by Uncoop Bank and so we made the change, but same bank.
Big business, you know.
Why bank bought Sterling Bank, Sterling Bank's software is better than Uncoop.
Yeah, so it's up. So, but I'm assuming if you probably occasionally get folks from another bank coming in, so you know.
Of course, Uncoop Bank was started here in Douglas County.
Yeah.
Then heard it from Little Canyon, started that bank, nineteen fifty something.
So anyway, I just, I was just curious how that works. I'm not advocating changing, you know.
We just have to be very, very careful, we run millions of dollars to the bank and thousands and thousands of checks and direct deposits. So we'd have to have a financial institution that can handle that kind of volume.
Where does Sterling Bank have? Was state-of-the-art latest and greatest software that when Uncoop Bank bought Sterling, they switched Sterling Bank's software.
We've been very happy uh with the various programs that Uncoop Bank has offered us. Um, we do a verification process where we write checks, we send them out, we send them a file. And if someone tries to cash a check and it doesn't match, it creates an exception and it alerts us. So, you know, and again, we have that direct desktop deposit, so no one has to drive to the bank anymore unless we very rarely in the business office do we get cash, so we've been very happy.
Can you process Canadian checks in your office?
I don't think I've ever received a Canadian check in my
Out of that. Because you got an exchange value, the Canadian dollar, not the same as American dollar. And those scanners don't know.
I'm just going to say no.
Okay.
Okay, continue, Cheryl.
All right, all right, uh, we were asked, you know, what three things do you want us to know? So I divvied it up between district revenue and district expenditures. So our next slide, um, one thing we think we, I'd really like you guys to know. Danielle and I, I was very excited to know. Um, grants are always for a specific purpose and must be used for the purpose stated in the grant. We get that a lot, you guys have all this money to do all this seismic rehab, how can you can't uh buy air conditioning with it? Well, it's for seismic rehabilitation. Title one is to provide Title One services, it's all very prescribed. So anyway, you cannot use grants, generally speaking, for anything other than what they were given to us for. And we get audited more ways to make sure that we only spend them on the things that we're supposed to spend them on. Um, my second thing I want you guys to know is that we're going to have some hard decisions to make for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, with S R funds ending, uh, there are paid positions that will either need to be absorbed by the general fund or the positions won't exist. There are approximately seventeen FTE with payroll costs of just under a million. Some of that is our virtual school, some of it is um some flex custodians to help us with extra cleaning. Um, we have some floating substitute teachers at each building, so we're going to be having those discussions coming up for the, prior to the budget for the next year. The third thing is just general information, um, the state school fund is appropriated on a biennial basis. Forty-nine percent of the funding is allocated in the first year of the biennium, which we are in right now. Fifty-one percent is allocated to the second year of the biennium, and that helps school districts as, you know, maybe payroll costs, you know, polos and things. It kind of helps them absorb some of those costs that we know are always going up. Um, so because of this, estimates can be made for the twenty-four, twenty-five year fairly reliably, um, but after that, it's all backed up through the legislature, are they going to give us more, are they going to give us less? So I really, people like, well, okay, so can you do projections of revenue, well, sort of, you know, best we can. Um, additionally, the state school fund is very dependent upon enrollment, we are paid on a per student basis. So when we have a sudden decrease in students, um, you know, within certain mechanism, that's a, that means a decrease in what we can spend the next year. And if you guys know how many students we're going to have in the twenty-five, twenty-six year, please let me know, because that's your really handy planning tool. Uh, switching to expenditures and I'll point out that this says un-audited, so we are preparing for our local annual audit right now. Um, the auditors and even us with our reconciliation processes, they may change, uh, we may change expenditures from one category to another, I know They may change, uh, we may change expenditures from one category to another. I know that sounds very odd, but. Um, is it really um, capitalizable asset that's charged to a five hundred object or is it really a supply account? So we clean up some of those things. So some of these things may change between now and the final audit and financials. But right now, based on last year's expenditures, rather than the budget, because expenditures are, of course, what actually happened as opposed to what we planned to happen. Um, salaries and wages, benefits and purse debt service, I included that with benefits and I'll tell you why. Um, general fund only for last year was forty-eight and a half million. All funds was about sixty-five and a half million dollars. About seventy-eight or seventy-two percent of those budgets respectively. I included the purse debt service in there. That seems weird. How is debt service a payroll benefit? Well. If we had not bonded our first debt, we would be charging at a higher percentage on all of our salaries. And that was clearly a benefit and that would be sent to hers. But it's lower because now we're paying bondholders as a foot, as opposed to paying it directly to first. So it really is most accurately reflected as a, as a benefit for this particular calculation. Um, purchase services, we call them the three hundred objects. Uh, that's includes our student transportation, which is a good three and a half, four million dollars. Um, utilities, those are the kind of things that wonder purchase services. If we hire a consultant, that's a purchase service. Ten million dollars in the general fund or seventeen percent of last year's budget. For all funds, we spent almost thirteen million in purchase services. Capital outlay includes all those equipment items that are five thousand dollars or more or that go into a large major maintenance project. Uh, we're building um, some secure vestibules right now. And we have some expenditures that may just be five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, but they go into that entire vestibule renovation. An entire cost of that will go on our fixed assets list and be depreciated. Uh, you can see we've got, uh, last year we spent one point seven million in that. Um, all funds, that's because it's including the seismic. We had um, still the end of last, beginning of last year, we had some Fremont seismic. And then we began a Joe Lane seismic renovation and that's why all funds you show six point two million. Um, then some supplies amounts and some liability insurance. You guys can read those amounts if you're interested. Just a little bit about how, you know, maybe schools are funded on the next slide. Uh, allocation, each school is given a per student allocation um, by the district from our general fund. To pay for discretionary supplies and library books. Um, for twenty-three, twenty-four, the allotment at the elementary level is a hundred and twenty-nine per student. Middle school, it is a hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. In the high school, it is two twenty and fifty cents. I think next year I'll round those up, so if I have to do this again, I don't have to say any fifty cents. So, the, the district budgets outside that allocation, we budget it for all payroll. We budget for um. Copier rental costs, all the utilities, the ongoing things, this allocation is really just for their supplies. If they, you know, when they buy copy paper, that's what they use. If they wanna buy, you know, extra books outside of what, you know, the curriculum. Uh, people have provided, this is the money that they use. And it's pretty much up to them within certain purchasing guidelines as to what they use the money for. Um, and just a side note, because we're kind of proud of this, uh, the student investment account or S I A grant is funding supply purchases at the building level. Um, those funds are specifically to offset the financial burden of families and guardians. So we have uh, eliminated student fees a few years ago and we gave our secondary schools. An allotment from the S I A to use in lieu of receiving, you know, a play fee or a debate fee or some of those things. And this year we have begun to buy some of the school supplies at our elementary level. Um, district support, I just, you know, um, that's everybody else. You know, we, we had some information in here for a bit about, you know, s- school to school funding. It ended up being quite a bit of a detail. And one big line was district support, but that includes everything else. It includes our maintenance. That's not specific to a building, uh, warehouse and purchasing. It's not specific to a building, but they're supporting all of our schools. So I just included that in there. Child nutrition is about the only department that is really separate. And that's because it is located within the grants and projects fund, because it's uh, got federal and state funds in it, so it is separate from the general fund. So tiny, tiny little bit, less than ten thousand dollars of nutrition services in the general fund. And that is to pay for um, the meals that we serve over the, the winter break and spring break. Those cannot be charged to um, the nutrition services fund. The general fund picks those up and like I said, it's less than ten thousand. They beat a bunch of kids. Talked about transfers a little bit earlier. Um, again, transfers are funds that are receipted at the general fund and transferred to other funds to pay for. Major purchases, um, maintenance, technology and curriculum are, are the three largest ones. So. Yeah.
To break up your.
Thank you.
Yeah, how come the little ones get the least amount of money on discretionary fund?
I can invite some of our secondary principals to tell you why it is more expensive to educate a, a secondary student.
So they will also tell you it's not enough, right?
Everyone does.
Okay.
High school level, they have specialized, okay, specialized equipment and. And your penance will be that I'll actually tell you the answer, which could go on for another five minutes.
They, they don't have three D printers in the elementary school.
Um, so three things that maybe you want to know about district expenditures. Um, talked a little bit about the financial statement given to the board. I just want you guys to know that that is general fund only. Um, it, just to kind of consolidate that information. Uh, and it's reflective of actual and estimated expenditures throughout the year. The estimates can change depending on changing district needs, changing school support funding or A D M increases and decreases. And we separate it by the major sources of funding and expenditure categories. So we separate it by, you guys have seen payroll, benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay. Insurance and then transfers, which is a separate line item. Another um, thing that we'd like you to know about district expenditures, and I think that this is a topic that could be. Almost on its own, so if you guys are really interested in Phoenix funding, I'm happy to sit down with anybody and talk to you about the O A Rs and O R Ss that guide Phoenix funding. But briefly, um, it is spending, it's funded according to state law. The average daily membership or A D M R is added to the district's A D M R, average daily membership resident. And the district flows it through to Phoenix at ninety-five percent of the funds for students in grades K twelve and ninety percent for the students in grade eight. We also include the waiting, um, up to eleven percent, the extra waiting that we get for special ed students. We receive it, so we flow it through to them. Uh, we also, if they have students in a qualifying parenting program, pregnant and parenting, we will flow those funds through to them as well. If we get the revenue for it, we give it to them based on state law. Um, some years, one year, we're about four years ago, we were quite startled to have O D E change the funding generally. The funding per student for the school district is the same as for charter schools. And one year due to however the funding mechanism is handled at O D E, they actually increased the charter schools rate in March. And we ended up paying them about three hundred dollars more per student than we received. So that was a bit of a shocker. Um, and they said, next time that happens, maybe we wanna negotiate with our charter school to make that not happen. Happened once in the last ten years, so um, at this moment, um, you guys can go online at any time, because I know you guys wanna just troll. Student funding online for O D E. Um, you can go ahead and you can pull up any estimates you want for like the last ten years off the O D E website. And you can look to see what our um, general purpose grant is as opposed to the charter schools. Third thing that you, we want you to know is um, special education grant funds are given to supplement, not replace or supplant. All districts must maintain M O E or maintenance of effort. That is, we must spend an amount equal in the general fund on special education students that we spent the year before. They don't want us to say, oh, we've got all this tasty I D A money. Let's, let's get that teacher over here and relieve the burden on the general fund. We have to maintain that spending in the general fund total. In order to receive our, our um, I D A funding. Uh, there are a few exceptions. We might have um, a kiddo in the program for the hearing or vision impaired and they may need an interpreter. Which can be quite expensive to a hundred thousand dollars in a year. Um, if that student moves out of the school district, that's a reason for us to reduce our general funds spending. We might have a very experienced special education teacher that's very high on the salary schedule and that person might retire. Um, although uh, it seems like all of our special education teachers fail at retirement, we lure them back anyway. But um, that's also another reason for a district to not have to meet maintenance of effort, but generally speaking, we try to spend the same amount. This year as we spent last year. And as the slide says, the last one, thank you very much for listening to me for the last however long this has been. And uh, happy to answer questions now, happy to answer questions via email.
Or I'm going back thinking harder on the L G I P. Who manages that for us as a district? Is it a managed fund?
The treasury.
Is it a, is it, it's not a local fund just for us? It's a local for our entire, the city of Roseburg and surrounding communities?
Yes, it is, it is uh, where municipalities can um, deposit their funds.
So it's just an interest-bearing account that they manage and everybody gets the same return? There's not, even though we have separate. You know, accounts for each fund, um, it's a general fund for everybody and they all get. And do we get a report on that, a performance report?
Oh, yes.
It says we made four percent last year.
They actually send emails, um. Every time they make a change in the interest rate, uh, they send out an email, they send out a monthly newsletter and there are annual reports.
Is it related? I mean, is it tied to the stock market? Is it, is it an investment fund or is it a, like you said, or an interest rate that they just pay flat?
It is tied to the investments that they make, so they may have some money and very safe, you know.
Right. Does it fluctuate greatly?
It does.
Does it historically perform at par with, yeah, the Dow Jones Industrial Average and?
Yes.
The levels and you get the gold standard from outside audit every year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we didn't get to hear you speak tonight, Danielle.
Oh, but you will, you will.
Oh, oh, yeah, later, li- later on, but for you two and your staff and your, and your, you guys always do a great job and I appreciate it. A couple of things I, just so you, that you've listened. Um, I'm worried about the S R funds going away. I mean, we have some big things on the horizon. And um. And, and I think it's important that people understand about the grants. You know, I can remember wasn't too many years ago, we had an ending fund balance when Lance Colley came on of eight thousand dollars. That was like scary. In fact, I can remember. Or some buggy days again, where we would have to borrow money in September to meet payroll. Because we had this stupid thing called the local option tax. Remember those? Well, you weren't, but you remember. Yeah, it was crazy.
Yeah.
And uh, so things have changed. I would just ask down the line, since you did such a great job on this, is um. I know it's not the right time right now, but some things that we're working on. I, I'd really like to see an in-depth. Presentation and a work session on how the E S D, how it works, how the funds coming in, are we, you know. I'd really like, I think the board would really like to see that, uh, are we getting, quite frankly, our fair share? And I know that maybe sometime this year.
We, we have been asking, Jared has been asking the E S D for the information that will enable Danielle and I to put something. Probably with the help of, if they get this table, uh, put together a presentation for you on that. Um, the information has been a little slow in coming, so we continue to ask and um, and then refine what our request is. Uh, so we get the necessary information.
Yeah, I would just add to that as part for the board to know the, the E S D goes through a process of having the board adopt a local service plan. And um, I wanna make sure the board has the information you need to be able to adopt that plan. And so the questions I'm asking, the information we're waiting for is going to be important to have that before for the board before that comes. So we've let the S D know that typically is an October process. Um, oftentimes or maybe it still comes in November, so the local service plan process is beginning. I think it's wise for our board to get the information about what that return has been before the board adopts that plan from the S D.
Thank you so much. Question?
Sure, yeah, just um, with the S R funds ending. I mean, that, that's was a concern, one of the bigger concerns. Now, it said. Possibly seventeen positions, full-time positions could be in jeopardy or. Or would be up for consideration. Sorry you put it that, I don't know how's the right way to put it, but.
Since the assistant superintendent, we would like to answer your question.
Okay, but I just, you mentioned just like um, additional custodian. Staff that we put on and roving sub. A few more I A positions, was it, or?
It's been utilized to add some temporary hours for instructional assistance. But those are temporary that go away each year, so we have a mechanism for um, principals to ask for additional assistance. During the school year and we've utilized those funds for that, so you total all of that up and it.
Oh, it adds up.
It adds up. We do have the positions at the virtual school. Um, as well as the custodial positions and the roving subs. Those are the full-time positions we have in that. But then we're utilizing that fun, the, the funds to pay for that temporary support as well.
Thank you.
And Anne, just, it's, doesn't mean they're going to go away. It just means it would have to find its way into the general fund. So. Yeah, so, but, but I think it's important that we all know that, that uh, and there's other things on the horizon too. Since you did such a great job, would you like to cover my next responsibility?
Yeah, okay. I would like to add one more thing. Um, you're reading in all the news. Other school districts within the state are working hard aggressively to get a strategic plan. We have one in place.
Yeah.
And the fact that we have ours in place has allowed us to do things far greater than what other school districts are doing. We, we deserve a kudo for getting that done. So everything that we do now, does it fit the strategic plan or not? It does, let's make it happen. If it don't, it don't happen. I mean, I'm reading one, one school board this morning, they're still struggling with it. They've been working up to two thousand nineteen.
Okay, we had a very productive discussion during the previous orientation session, which we held on July tenth. And again, on August ninth. And we're gonna continue the discussion uh, in this book that our staff put together. Uh, and we're gonna go to chapter five. And in front of you, and I'm not gonna take very long, because I'm sure most of you have read this. But in front of you, this is what's in chapter five, public meeting laws, board meetings and executive sessions. I just wanna hit a couple. Uh, points and then we're going to um. Adjourn the board work session, take a short break and then we will move into executive session. We will leave this room and we won't come back into this room, because it's all strictly uh, executive session stuff. So um, I'm gonna talk just shortly about public meeting law and um. To make things simple. Every meeting that we hold. Just about, except, except uh, an executive session is open to the public. So if you think that way, it makes it really, really easy. You don't have to think, oh, is this open to the public or not? Even our subcommittees. Are open to, to the public. So when we start our building insights, tours. Uh, if somebody in the public wants to tag along, they're more than welcome to. Okay, so. So I, I think that's really important, just, it's, it's really easy to think, think that way. Where they, where, and in an executive session. It's who the board decides or needs to come into the meeting. And the media, other than four, and I'll go over this real briefly, there's only four times the media can't really, can't come in. Two of them are dealing with children, one's with negotiations and one is if it deals with the organization that. The reporter might be involved in, uh, media, everything. Other than that, they can come in. They can't report on substance in exact session, but they can report on the general topic. What we, gen- the general topic of what we called the uh, the executive session for what O R S and that's it. So that, that makes it pretty darn simple. Remember that the public meeting law is a pub, public attendance law, not a public participation law. Think that's important. Um. You know, you, there's only two ti- two meetings, basically, you have to have public participation and I'm not advocating not having it. But the two are the budget hearing. And um, generally it's something off the wall, so to speak, and not off the wall, but are. generally it's something off the wall, so to speak, and not off the wall, but are, when we do something with, different with procurement and that type of stuff. Better than that, you don't have to have public participation, but that's wise to have it, I think. And I think we do a really good job of doing that. All meetings of governing bodies shall be conducted in a public, in public unless specifically exempted. No quorum or of a governing body may meet in private to decide or deliberate towards a decision of any of any decision. So we can't make a decision even in executive session. It's just there to discuss. A board must provide notice for time and place of its regular meeting. The board may adjourn a regular meeting until the next regular meeting or call a special meeting before the next regular meeting. Basically, we have to announce that we're having a public meeting, a regular meeting or a budget meeting, or I mean, a work session meeting at least twenty four hours in advance. And I can speak from experience. I blew that one time years ago. I would, I would do it again for, it was a bad situation, but I think the district does a really good job of that, you know. That goes for subcommittees too. You have to give a twenty four hour notice. Meet for subcommittees. Okay, when the need for an executive session arises after a, a regular board meeting has been published, so you can't have a board meeting and then decide you're gonna have an executive session. You have, you still have to announce you're having an exec, executive session twenty four hours in advance. So I know over the years, that's kind of been a bone of contention, but you, you just can't do it. And, and they highly recommend that you don't put an executive session on every board meeting to cover your rump. Because that's not, that's breaking the law in my book. If it's something that important that you need to have an executive session, you announce it twenty four hours and then you need the next day or two days. When holding executive session, that will be followed by a decision and open session, be sure to include in the, an agenda item for the decision. So you've made a decision, I guess, to hire a superintendent. You have to come out in public. You, you can't make a decision in executive, but you can talk about it, come out public, talk more about it, and then make that decision. This is what I thought was interesting. Any meeting in, including an executive session of a public governing body may be held by telephone or video conference and recorded in accordance to the public meeting statute. So if one of you are out of town and we've done this before, we can get you on the phone and, and, and talk about that. For meetings other than executive sessions, a public body shall make available to the public at least one place in here where the public can listen to the communication at the time it occurs. Now, nowhere in here, and I kept, kept looking, does it say we have to have Zoom meetings? I just can't find, I, we should, I think it's, I think it's really good and I think it's been very, very beneficial, but I don't see it in here.
The new O R S that was passed.
Is it, so it's back, yeah, so it's back, it's one of these pages in the back, okay. I did read that, so. Let's talk a little bit about conflict of interest. I, I just, over the years, there's just been a couple of times we've had a conflict with a board member. So if a decision's gonna be made or a vote, let's say we've decided we're gonna go S Mart to provide all of our breakfasts for biscuits and gravy or whatever. And they really have good biscuits and gravy. Since Andrew is involved, he would have to declare a conflict and not be able to vote. Pretty simple. I think all seven of us on the board understands that. But not, not all boards and not all board members that I've worked with over the years have, okay? Janet and her staff, they do an excellent job of keeping minutes. I read where board, school districts get themselves in really hot water when they don't have somebody taking good, good notes. Good minute notes. Zoom really helps, I'm assuming. If you can go back through and watch if you have to, but the old days, it was all shorthand. That was crazy. But okay, just trying to slip through this. Any questions? Because you can read this if you haven't read it yet. I just wanted to hit the high points. Questions? You're not gonna get us in trouble, right? Nope, okay. Alright, I'm done because we're running along, so I'm going to adjourn. The work session, we'll, we'll take a couple minute break and then the board as what we've started to do this year, we leave this room, we go into a secured room. Hopefully the security has checked, checked, made sure there's no listening devices in there. Hey, it's happened. We're trying to be careful. And, and that's what we'll do whenever we hold an executive session, we will get up and we will move into a different room. Okay, thank you so much for coming. Have a good rest of the week.